Like the call the meeting to order, Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. There's a reminder, I'm supposed to remind you to silence your cellphones. The meeting documents are available for review down at the end, next to Commissioner Karski. And Carol Muller is here if you need a listening device. So that takes us to routine business. I consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved, second.
Motion in a second, all in favor. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is a motion to approve the commission meetings from September 5th, nineteen, or 2017.
That's my motion.
Second. Motion in a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Bills to be paid.
Pay the bills.
Second.
So motion in a second, any comments?
Madam Chair, as is often the case these days, we are remitting $3.4 million to the state on motor vehicle fees. And with that taken off, our bills are considerably less than the number.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion in a second, any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, thank you. We got several, we have several different reports here today for your consideration. Minnehaha County Regional Juvenile Detention Center report for August of 2017. The Minnehaha County Highway Construction Project Report for September 2017. Auditor's account with the county treasurers as of August 31st, 2017. And the Minnehaha County Sheriff's Report for August of 2017. That takes us to personnel actions. Consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, thank you. The next item is the application for abatement, and there are none. There are no notices and requests, no planning and zoning notices, no petition for compromise of lien. So that takes us to regular business.
Opportunity for public comment.
Oh, yes, there we go, thank you. Opportunity for public comment.
Good morning, Commissioners. Joe Bosman, Sheriff's Office. And this is again, week number three, talking about the Burn Jag Grant that we receive. It is a split grant.
Oh, we're at public comment, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I thought you had something.
Yep.
Good morning.
Bob Colby. You know, as we grow, each of us takes on various levels.
Bob, do you want to move the mic closer up? You're tall, you know.
Got that morning phlegm. As we grow, each of us takes on a different level of responsibility. And with yesterday being the anniversary of 9/11, or 9/11, however you want to call it, you know, each of us, we take on responsibilities for ourselves, or family, et cetera. And even when we take the oath and sit behind that bench, why, we take on some responsibility. But it wasn't until 9/11 that it was suddenly that I experienced that, oh my gosh. Because at that point, those sitting on that side of the bench were responsible for a whole lot more than, than their, themselves, their family, and the people who were their constituency in their county, or the city, whichever they were elected for. And suddenly, you have a whole lot of, what do I do now? What do we do now? Where do we go from here? And it really is a sobering effect. Don't have that experience now, because not being there, but that was one of those things that it comes back to haunt you once in a while. Because it wasn't until a couple of years ago that I found out that a friend of mine, college classmate, died because of 9/11. He was not in the buildings, but he lived in that immediate community, and he died of all of the dust and dirt and everything else that the people were breathing at that point in time. And so that brought it even closer for me, out here in the Midwest, where I don't have any real personal contact with the things that had happened in New York. But that aside, I was looking, probably would not have said anything until I saw something in the paper this morning. And it's not often that I agree with Commissioner Barth, but talking about the TIF and how, and would be my question, how can a chartered entity, the city, dictate to a constitutional entity expenditures and budgetary items? How can a chartered entity, which is the city, dictate to the counties, and the county is a constitutional entity? It's a higher level of government. So how can something from the bottom tell something above it what to do? It would be as though the county were telling the legislature, take a hike. The county seems to be one of those entities that is always the, more or less, the whipping boy. Because if there's money coming into the county, it's easy to take it away. Going back to the personal property tax replacement money, the tax that was on Citibank that was to help fund county government, when it gets to be too much money in the eyes of the legislature, they decide, well, we're going, we are going to cap that because we need to tap into that. They don't need the money. And it seems to fall all along the line. It might be that the counties have to be even more vociferous in their agitation with the legislature, because they get dictates from the legislature to do things without funding. And here you have an entity that is saying, ah, you don't need that money, we're going to give it to someone else. So it might be worth pursuing. Maybe it would be whistling in the wind to have this viewed as a potential court action and see if the Supreme Court would say, how can they take money from you? And you have no say in what, and how that money is, is allocated, or taken away, or given to someone else. Just a thought for the day.
Thank you. Is any other public comment? If not, we will move on to the next, to regular business. And the first item is a public hearing to consider the 2017 Annual Burn Jag Joint Spending Plan for Minnehaha County and the City of Sioux Falls. Now Joe Bosman. Sorry, I confused you earlier.
Take two. Anyway, Joe Bosman, Minnehaha County Sheriff's Office. This is the opportunity that was set, we did notice two weeks ago, to open up as part of the grant requirements, to have a period of public comment on the 2017 South Dakota Justice Assistant Grant allocations. This is a split grant between the Sheriff's Office and the City of Sioux Falls Police Department. The City of Sioux Falls is serving as the fiscal agent, and the funds are split 65%, 35% with the county receiving 35%. Couple of items that we're looking to spend our 35% on are some upgrades to some in-car video that we have all of our patrol cars, as well as some upgrades to the ballistic helmets worn by our SWAT team, and some training for our upcoming information system that we'll be switching to at the beginning of the year. So if anybody has any questions from the commission, I could help answer those, or if there's anybody in the crowd from the public that has questions as well, be more than happy to answer them.
Any questions for Mr. Bosman? This is a public hearing, so if there's anyone here that has, would like to make any comments, ask any questions, speak now, forever hold your peace. This is a public hearing, but I understand that we, there's no motion that needs to be made at this time.
No, no action required by the commission. The inter-local agreement was signed by the commission last week, and so that kind of covers the nitty-gritty of how the program is going to be moderated and played out. This is just a chance for comment.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
That takes us to item 11, to consider a motion to declare various highway department equipment as surplus for sale at public auction. And then we'll separately take a motion to authorize the auditor to publish notice of sale. D.J. Boothey.
Good morning, Commissioners. D.J. Boothey, Highway Superintendent. Every year, our group of supervisors at the Highway Department get together and review our existing equipment, both our fleet and, and just operational equipment such as mowers and that kind of thing. And they identify certain items that are either being replaced or no longer needed in our, our equipment for service that we perform. And we identify those items and, and request them to be surplused. On a, a number of different ways that we surplus our items, we do utilize, for some things, the city-county auction. And we also use some other outside auction services, depending on what the items are for. For example, the Goman Auction Services down in Lenox, they have a construction auction that, that we get pretty good prices for some various construction equipment. Interstate Auction Center is really close to our, our shop up in the northeast part of town, and they're over in Brandon, or near Brandon. And they have some construction, smaller construction specialty auctions that we can bring a whole bunch of stuff over there, and it doesn't take a long time to transport things. And then Iron Planet, we've used them several times in the past for some of our larger equipment. That's a worldwide auctioning service on the internet, and we've been getting really good luck selling things on ironplanet.com. So there's quite a lengthy list summarized in the briefing memo packet. I don't think I have to go through every single one of them, but I certainly can if, if you need me to, or I can answer specific questions about any of the individual items. But other than that, I'm just requesting a declaration of surplus of all of the items tabulated in the briefing memo. And then after that, we'll ask for permission for issuing the notice of sale for the, each of the individual auctions.
Any questions? Commissioner Barth?
D.J., do they advertise this pretty well? I mean, as I look at this, 100-plus used wood, wood bridge planks, that might be a different group of people than would want a post hole digger, or a, you know, solid-state cedar. It might be, you know, the antique people, or even builders, construction people.
So one benefit that we get about using these auctioning services is they do their own advertisement, and they have certain groups or people that, that they advertise to. And that's one of the benefits that we get, instead of bringing a lot of these items to the city-county auction, where we would typically just advertise in the Argus Leader or some local media. We also advertise on our social media accounts, the county's social media accounts. The funny thing about the bridge plank specifically, it's in such high demand because there's not a lot of it available anymore, and so we get much more than what it's worth, much more than what we paid in any of these auctions for used, used bridge plank. And the same goes for our culverts as well. Now, we've got used metal culverts that we get more money for now than what we paid for them. So it's just a supply and demand thing, as long as we're connecting to the right audience, and, and the benefit of using these auctioning services are connecting to the right audience.
I might know where to dig up some more culverts if you need them. Make a motion to approve.
One second.
Did you have a question?
Yeah, a couple of questions, if you don't mind, D.J. Could have called you, I guess, earlier and asked you, but when we do an estimated value, how do you come up with an estimated value on these things?
There's a couple of different ways, and it might vary from item to item. In our, in our inventory system, we use a depreciation model that estimates the value of an item. If it's a more expensive item, similar to, for example, the 2002 or 2003 Sterling Trucks that are being proposed to be sold on ironplanet.com, we look at recent past sales of similar, similar items on that auctioning service.
Okay.
And, and so we're able to look up both past sales and current sales to see where they're being purchased at currently, so.
And then, how are the auction services paid?
All three of those are a percentage fee, and I believe all three of them are different. I want to say that Goman is maybe a 7% of the total sale. I think Interstate Auction is an 8% of the total sale. And then Iron Planet has a, a scale depending on how much the item sells for, and what level of auction that we choose. They've got a certification process where they send somebody to inspect the mechanics of each vehicle, and then they can, I think it's called an ironclad guarantee that they offer for the purchaser, and that costs a few hundred dollars for that inspection, but usually get a much larger return on your, your purchase value, so. And every percentage on Iron Planet is dependent on, on how much the actual item sold for.
And are the, is the commissions then paid by the buyer, or by the seller?
By the seller.
By the seller?
Yeah.
Good.
Good questions. Any other questions? Okay, I believe we have a motion to declare various highway department equipment as surplus for sale at public auction. We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And now I would take a motion to authorize the auditor to publish notice of sale with three auction vendors.
That's my motion.
Second.
A motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, thank you very much.
Thank you.
That takes us to item 12, where we'll consider a motion to authorize the chair to sign the joint powers agreement renewal for secure and non-secure detention services. Jamie Gravitt.
Good morning, Jamie Gravitt, Juvenile Detention Center. Before you is the governing document of our partnership with our partner counties that we supply secure detention for, and also non-secure detention at JDC and shelter care at Lutheran Social Services. The original agreement was made prior to our last edition in 1997, as a way to help finance the, the construction costs and split between the users. Two years ago, that agreement ended. We extended it for another two years, thinking at that time that we may be building a non-secure or shelter care type building on the JDC grounds. That's been tabled until further notice. But we feel that this document's important to keep our partnership bound together and to guide us in the way that we would do business if there were a construction project in the future. This has no money tied to it right now. The contract for services will come later this year in November, where we set our yearly rate, or daily rate for the next year.
Any questions for Jamie? Commissioner Karski?
On the November action, when you, when you bring that to us, can you, I guess, at that point, kind of elaborate how you come up with the rates and how that's determined? I'd be interested in that. I was reading through the document here over the weekend, trying to, and there's nothing that addresses, like you said, any of that in there, so I'd be interested to see how we come up with our rates, so appreciate it.
I definitely will.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Hagerger?
Just a comment, that the rates that we used for when building projects would be different than what our rates for this day would be. So yeah, those are good conversations to have, Jamie.
Thank you.
Commissioner Barth?
Do we have any new counties joining with us, and is there a prospect for other counties to join in the next year or so?
We don't have any new counties at this time. The last two counties to join were two years ago, and that was Union and Davison County at that time. I have not heard from any other counties being interested in joining at this time.
Thanks.
You know, that's a great question. I mean, we seem to think that we end at the border with Minnesota. Do we ever reach out to, to look at that side of the, and is that even possible, or allowed?
That's not really possible due to interstate compact rules. We, we don't, how, we will house occasionally for other states, but there's all kinds of technical and legal things that come into play with housing kids from another state. So we have to work to get them back to their state, or for them to even consider housing, they'd have to have approval from both states to do that in the first place. So, but we're open to suggestions for other counties. If they're interested, they'd have to provide information to us to determine, you know, what their share would be in a new building project if it came along. And then also, we would determine their daily rate like anyone else. We, last year, we were approached by the Flandre Tribe about providing services for them. They never took action on it when we presented a contract. So I mean, we're open to, to new partners, it's just, there's, most people are locked in with who they're using right now.
Any other questions? If not, it entertain a motion to...
Make a motion to authorize the chair to sign this joint powers agreement.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Jamie.
Thank you.
Okay, that takes us to item 13, to consider a motion to authorize the Director of Emergency Management to enter into an agreement with the State of South Dakota of Homeland Security to receive a grant award for portable radios in the amount of $95,795.89. Carol Muller.
Good morning, Commissioner. Carol Muller, Commission Administrative Officer, and I am stepping in for the Emergency Management Department today. On a yearly basis, Minnehaha County typically receives funds from the Homeland Security Projects, different ones, you're familiar with having had those approvals in the past. This is a 100% reimbursement grant from the State of South Dakota and requires no match from the county. Minnehaha County was awarded $95,795 for portable radios for the Minnehaha County Sheriff. The State Office of Homeland Security has moved to an online grants management, and we are requesting today that the commission authorize the Emergency Management Director to enter into the agreement with the State of South Dakota.
Are there any questions?
Make a motion to approve. Afterwards, I have another comment.
The comment?
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, and several comments, so we'll start with Commissioner Barth.
Well, it actually is beyond this particular item, but apparently, we've not been asked to provide any support to Texas or Florida at this point. There was a feeler at one point for, for Texas, but it didn't go through anywhere. I just wanted to mention that.
Question for Carol, are these radios the ones that we are talking about on a regular basis?
Excellent question, and I, Lynn clarified that for me. And they will not be spending, spending these actual dollars until that has all been clarified and taken care of. So if there is a new one, then we're purchasing the new ones.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, so we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, thank you. That takes us to item 14, consider a motion to approve several actions related to the disposition of tax deed properties. Auditor Litz.
Good morning, Commissioners. Bob Litz from the Auditor's Office. And on September 7th, the Minnehaha County Appraisal Board went out to assess the six tax deed properties that the county holds for 2017. Their findings are attached with the tax deed report, and the Auditor's Office is requesting the following motions. Number one, a motion that the commission accept the findings of the Minnehaha County Surplus Property Appraisal Board Report. Number two, a motion to declare the following tax deed properties with the following RDIs, RDI 11897, RDI, RDID 69402, RDID 76376, RDID 52766, RDID 63906, and RDID 63172 as surplus for sale at public auction and approve the recommended minimum bid amounts. And number three, a motion that authorize the county auditor to publish a notice of public auction to be held on Saturday, September 30th, 2017 at 10:00 a.m. Now, those things said, the last property on there, RDID 63172, came in late in the process, and I did not have a chance to visit it, but when the, the appraisal board went and visited it, we found somebody living on that. And I would like to pull that property from this sale until we resolve that issue. And so I would look for the three motions that are on here, plus a motion to pull that property from the sale today.
Auditor Litz, I have a, one other clarification, if I may. I understand that if we accept the findings of the Minnehaha County Appraisal Board, that one of their findings is that property, RDID 69402, they're recommending that it be given to the adjacent property owner?
Yes.
So if we go ahead and accept that recommendation, then that property will also need to be pulled. Is that correct?
Um, you know, I'm not certain about that. We don't have an agreement with them, so I thought accepting the findings would be give to adjacent property owner, and I'd go out and make that arrangement if they're willing to do that, and then bring it back at that point.
Okay. Commissioner Hagerger?
Just a question, on the, on the record or ID number, the last one, the 63172, you found people living there, so you'll work with them to try to keep them in their home? Are they the property owners? That was, I don't know what you meant by...
You know, there's somebody living on there, and I've had conversations with Maggie Gillespie, and I'm not sure at this point how wise it would be to have a public discussion on that.
Oh, okay.
And so we'd like to pull that, to resolve those issues.
Okay.
I'm getting some legal advice, that if we do desire to give the property as, as suggested by the appraisal board to the adjacent landowner, then instead of auctioning that off, we just pull it from now. You can go ahead and work with the adjacent landowners, see if they want it, and if, if they are willing to accept it, then you'll just come back to us with a quick claim deed.
That was my plan, yes.
The alternative, Madam Chair, would be to, you know, attempt to, to auction it, and then if, if you can't sell it, then you've had that recourse, but, so I think that...
And to that end, we always look at those options, but it's a small piece of triangle that, that goes off the back end of somebody's backyard, and the railroad is the next property that's adjacent to it. I believe they've been taking care of it for a period of time, and they may be surprised to find out they don't really own it.
[laughing]
So I, I think that given it's that adjacent property owner, and then combining the property tax notices, so they get one property tax notice on that, would be the preferred method.
Okay. I'd make a motion?
I just have another question, I guess. On the first property listed, the assessed value in 2016 was exempt. What is this property?
Well, that is some property that came up on sale two years ago. And we looked at it, and there was a large pile of black dirt, which D.J. found very interesting. And so we pulled it from the sale that year, and D.J. mined all the dirt off it, and now it's, it's available again, so we put it back on the sale. And that's why it's exempt. So if you're looking at the appraisal board value of $25,000, that was the last, that was the last appraisal that we had on it, or assessed value.
If I may, 100,000 square feet is pretty big.
It is.
And the fact that it's landlocked, I believe by statute, the neighbors have to give you access to it, whether you drive over their property or what, don't they?
Well, I'm, I'm not certain about those there, but you know, just common practice has been, there is a, there's a parcel to the north of it, and to, and one to the south of it, and the county, there's, there's a road that goes back there, but it ends. I mean, there's an access, but it ends, there's no, no completed road. And that has been the access for the property. There's nothing built on all three of them. They back up to rural land, and there's a ditch, and also the city limits are right there. And so while the potential for development in the future is there, I think it's going to be a while. And, but the other, the other two parcels that are on each side of it are owned by the same owner, and I'd anticipate they'd be, they'd be at the sale looking to buy this.
Okay.
Okay. I would make a motion to accept these with, and, but pull RDI number 63172 and RDI number 69402 to pull.
Second.
Okay, so I think the first motion we need is to accept the findings of the Minnehaha County Surplus Property Appraisal Board Report.
Okay, I'll accept the findings.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, okay.
Then my second motion still stands, as far as, make a motion to, to accept these again, or whatever it is, with the exception of 69402 and 63172.
Motion.
Did you get that? Olivia, sorry.
Okay, so I think what the motion is, is that we declare RDID 11897, 76376, 52766, and 63906 as surplus for sale at public auction.
Good job.
And approve the minimum bid amounts. Okay, there's been a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Can I ask one quick question before Auditor Litz leaves? So these are all being auctioned basically for back taxes, correct? So if somebody comes in and pays the taxes, are they automatically removed then?
Well, that, it's a little bit late in the game for that, and that would have been a private deal, they'd had to have negotiated before it got to this point.
Okay, so now it's done. These are going on auction, period, okay. And the auction is held?
Saturday at 10 o'clock in the foyer of the courthouse down here, September 30th.
And if somebody wanted to look at these properties?
I do have some large maps, we typically post on the wall. I also have a list that is maintained by Olivia, the people that are frequently interested in these sales, we do send out a notice, and if somebody wants more information on these properties, they could certainly contact me. You know, there is a public access for real estate in Sioux Falls, and typically folks who are interested in these are able to access that.
Okay, I think we need one final motion, and that is to authorize the auditor to publish notice of the public auction on September 30th.
So moved.
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I have one more question.
Commissioner Heiburger?
Auditor Litz, I have one more question for you, sorry. On the one that we put out there, RDI number six-three-nine-zero-six is still a buildable lot. In the past, we have, and I know it's too late for this, but in the past, we have given some of those properties to CCOG, and they have built affordable homes on them and stuff, but I'm believing that the cost of the value of the land was much lower than, than what this particular one was.
Yes, that one there, and, you know, it is, it is a big lot, SDEF is tied up quite heavily right now, and I, I think, I did not contact her about it, I did, I mean officially, but I did have a conversation, and it appeared the best route would be to go on this, on this sale.
Thank you.
It's also contiguous to a lot that it looks like it belongs to, and so we're sending out a letter to that neighbor, hoping that they'll show up at the auction.
Thank you.
And the other part about it is, on all these here, according to state statute, if we don't get an interesting offer, I can pull it from the sale that day, and we can do it again next year, or look at it again.
All right, any other questions? Thank you very much. Okay, that takes us to item fifteen, authorize the chair to sign this certification to acknowledge law enforcement efforts in cooperation with the U.S. Department of Homeland Security. Warren Gromer.
Good morning, Jeff Gromer, I'm the warden at the jail. I am just here to present and ask for a signature on the certification, certification of illegal immigration cooperation. The Department of Justice sent out a notice of a new opportunity for additional consideration concerning the 2017 COPS grants application. We've, the sheriff's office has applied for a 2017 COPS grant, so we're in the group for consideration for that. The additional consideration is based off of two criteria, one, that we allow Homeland Security investigators' access to our detention facilities, which we do, and two, that we would notify Department of Homeland Security as early as practically possible of the release of someone that they're investigating upon their request, and we do that as well. So, these, we already meet the criteria for additional consideration with existing policy and practice. So, there's a attached certification that I just am asking for Commission signature on.
Are there any questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
So, motion and a second, any further comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. So, that takes us to item sixteen, which is to consider a motion to recommend a method of sale for the nine-oh-eight West Building, and to authorize staff to proceed forward.
Good morning, Commissioners. Carol Muller, Commissioned Administrative Officer. Before you today is, we're looking for direction as to disposal of the nine-oh-eight West Avenue North Building. And to take us through a little bit, this is a building that the county has owned for about twenty years. It is the property that would be directly across from Buffalo Wild Wings, up in the Event Center area that we have. It is currently open at this time, and you have declared this property already to be surplus on June twenty-fifth, two thousand and seventeen. You passed that, and authorized staff to obtain an appraisal on the property, and the appraisal came back as two million, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which leads us to where we're at now. We are looking for direction from the Commission in terms of how you'd like to see this disposed of. You have three options in front of you. You have sealed bids, you have auction, and you can also go through a broker. Questions I can answer for you?
Do we want discussion? Do we want a motion? What, what are you looking for, Carol?
I, I mean, I think if discussion would be helpful, if you have a motion, we can see if that generates discussion.
I would, I would make a motion that we would use sealed bids, and then we could discuss it.
Second.
So, we have a motion and a second, is there comments or discussion?
So, with sealed bids, would we then have a minimum that we would, what, I wish we were here discussing what to do with the proceeds rather than how to sell it, but...
I think that we can, we can make a decision if we're going to accept the bid or not. Correct, Maggie? Sorry.
Well, you, you have an appraisal of the property, and the statute lays out the ninety percent threshold, so I think that, I don't know that you are mandated to set forth a minimum. The appraisal is public record, so anyone who wants to submit a bid probably has access to that appraisal, I suspect, and so I, I don't think that you're in a position to set the minimum, because the bids will, you know, assumably, the market will control the circumstances.
And we have complete discretion whether we accept any bids, so...
Good to know.
If we end up projecting a bid, we can come back later, and we can decide whether we want to use a realtor, or we can, we can make another decision. And I think this is a good way to go, if you have a couple of people bidding, at least we kind of know where the market is at out there.
All right, well, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
If I can just add to that, for the Commissioners, and for anybody who might be listening, thinking they might be interested in this building, I will come back on September twenty-sixth, two weeks from today, which is the next time the Commission meets with a resolution, and the materials prepared for us to go through and do that, yet this fall.
Okay, I think it might be helpful, too, if we could set up maybe one or two open houses for people who might want to come through, and see, see what happens.
Thank you.
Okay, so that takes us to item seventeen, a briefing on the two thousand and eighteen budget means of finance. Carol Muller.
Thank you, Commissioners. Yes, before you is an updated means of financing, you have not seen that, and that is what we will bring forth on the twenty-sixth for adoption. And if there's any other direction or changes that we want, that you want to give us, we look forward to that, but two weeks from today is your, is your day that you will be adopting, adopting this agenda. Per statute, you need to do that by the end of September. The budget, as it is right now, stands at one, one hundred and thirty-one million, twenty-four thousand dollars, twenty-four thousand, four hundred and two dollars. That does include forty-six million dollars for jail expansion, and the associated parking that goes into that, plus the budget for the museum archive facility, and slight changes to income and expenses that were based upon more current reports and data that become available during this time. So, it's a higher number, but it's one that is very comparable to what you've had in the past, when you consider the general operating funds that go in.
Any questions for Carol? So, just as a point of clarification, the opt-out amount remains the same, correct?
Correct.
We still have six hundred thousand dollars of opt-out left. Okay?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. So, that takes us to liaison reports. Are there any liaison reports? I would just note that the Homeless Advisory Board met yesterday, and Heather Muller joined us. She is a national consultant and works with coordinated entry systems. She actually has been, lives down in Houston, and it's really quite fascinating that they've, once they set up their system of coordinated entry, which is very similar to the model that Thrive is working towards to try to get, kind of one-stop-shop, that the government leaders actually contacted their Homeless Advisory Board and asked them to come up with a plan to house the people that were remaining in the home, in the shelters after the storm, and they were able to get that done in basically two weeks, because they had the system already in place. And these weren't necessarily all people that had been homeless before, but they were able to access the available hotels and other options for those folks, and get them set up with furniture. And so, it just reiterated to me, and reinforced to me, that, you know, once you can get a system set up, that that system then can be used for multiple purposes, not just for homeless, and so, I was encouraged by the work that's being done in that area.
Madam Chair, I just would glom onto your comment there, and none of us know when we might become homeless. I can remember during the Missouri River floods, Dakota Dunes, people in those multimillion-dollar homes suddenly couldn't live there, and, you know, you look at the disasters down in Texas and Florida right now, none of us know when we might become homeless, and where we would go. Some of us have other resources, but not everybody does, and anyway, thank you.
Okay, so that takes us to new business. Is there any new business? Commissioner Bahr?
Madam Chair, you know, as regards to our state convention coming up next week, we will not be meeting here, and in preparation for going there, I know that we'll be meeting with some of the other counties in our region here tomorrow, and we'll be hopefully bringing some resolutions that we would like considered to them, and Commissioner Heiburger is more knowledgeable than I am, but I think we need to, if we're going to bring anything off the floor when we go to Rapid City, we need to be prepared to follow the parliamentary requirements when we get there, and whatever we can do in preparation, going through tomorrow's meetings, and before we depart on Sunday or Monday, we should get on it, so to speak.
Commissioner Heiburger?
Just to follow up a little bit on that, we did, we worked on that, there was a, a group of people from municipalities and counties that worked on some resolutions that didn't get passed at our state board meeting in August, and so those have to be brought off the floor at the convention next week, and I think you have to have two-thirds majority of the, of the delegates in order to get it off the floor for even discussion. So, this, tomorrow, when we have our Southeast District meeting, those are probably some of the things we should discuss as our, at our meeting, as to which ones would our Southeast District be interested in moving forward to the state convention, and see if we can even get it off the floor for a vote. And if we do get support, we have to have copies, there's a, there's a number of copies that we have to have to be able to distribute to the...
Other voting members.
Other voting members at the, at the state convention. So, we will work through those details probably tomorrow, and see where we're going to go with that. So, I intend to be at that meeting, I don't know who else is, and that is in Yankton, I believe, Yankton tomorrow, so...
There are two other things I'd like to briefly comment on. One is that discussion we had in public input there on tax increment financing, and I'm not necessarily opposed to TIFs, but it would be nice if we could make an independent decision about whether we would forego our share of that tax money. Certainly, the city's share is equal to ours anyway, and, you know, that would be a significant help to any developer, and, you know, I, I just feel like we ought to have a say in it as well, because it is writing a, a check right out of our pocket. I was surprised to be in the paper today, but anyway, the second item I just wanted to mention, as we just did pass the anniversary of nine eleven, Mayor Giuliani came and spoke at Senator Abdullah's game feed some years back when he was a candidate for president at the time, he didn't make it, but, and he made a brilliant speech, and I was afraid it would be a political speech, it was not. He talked about the attacks in New York and the attacks in DC, and he said, you know, we don't always remember the third attack, which happened in rural Pennsylvania, and a volunteer fire department guy was the first person on the scene. We don't know where the next terrorism attack might be. It could easily be in rural South Dakota, and our people would be the first responders, and so, we, we must remember that, it's not just the Twin Towers, it's all of us were attacked, and all of us could be attacked again.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Karski?
To use Commissioner Bahr's comments, I'm going to glom onto your comments on the tax increments financing, you know, I, there, nothing is being taken away from us, because you can't take away something you don't already, that you don't have. We don't have the increase, we're giving up the increment, the opportunity for the increment for a few years, and to Mr. Colby's comments, how lower authority the city can take money from the county that's provided for by state statute, so, I mean, they're only doing what they're allowed to do by state statute. I, for one, am a big believer in TIFs, and I, the system works, and I think it works well, and when you look at what our local jurisdictions have as far as economic development tools and incentives for businesses, it truly is the only one. Other cities and states allow tax money to be given to businesses to bring them to the community. We don't do that here to incent them, we don't buy them land, we don't provide a whole lot, other than being able to use the tax increment finance to, which the, the business that's building that property is still paying the full tax, they just get some of it back as an incentive to improve the property, where there's situations that exist that cause an unreasonable increase, like a pollution of the ground, where a lot of soil has to be removed. So, I, I'm a big believer in TIFs, and I, I don't believe any system is perfect, and it can be always, you know, looked at, but I don't see where the county is giving up anything that doesn't, it, it's not in our pocket, it's not in our wallet, it's not money that's being taken from us, so...
Madam Chair, if I might respond, I rarely disagree with my colleague over there, but I'm going to right now. You know, just recently, in the last couple of years, the city has made a deal to acquire nine acres of land that belonged to the railroad. Are they going to sell that land to developers at four million dollars an acre? I don't think so. And so, when these properties are given away to, to certain folks, that's certainly an incredible subsidy, and the fact that the city has the assets to, to make these, their share available to, through TIFs, is, is not unreasonable, but they could also have remediated the contaminated soil by spending their own four million dollars, rather than taking two and a half million dollars from us, and I, I just would point those, those things out. I do believe that it is a reasonable thing, and I'm, I'm certainly not opposed to any developer taking advantage of it, but I, I would say that there are tools that belong to the city that, in spite of our interests.
And, and I agree completely, that's why I said, there's no system that's perfect, and if there are other ways to make something work, I think they all need to be looked at, but the TIF program in itself, I think, is a great program, so...
Okay, good discussion, thank you. I think that's the end of new business, unless I'm mistaken. That takes us to old business, is there any old business?
Just mentioned that the convention, state convention is next week, Monday, Tuesday, I think just Monday, Tuesday, in Rapid City, and there are several Commissioners that'll be attending.
Meeting next week.
Correct. No meeting next week. Okay, that takes us to the end of our regular agenda, I'd entertain a motion to go into executive session for personnel.
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you all very much.